We call the City Council.
Your Honor, Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Whitman?
Here.
Eiko Angeli?
Here.
Vining?
Here.
Germany?
Here.
Willmore?
Here.
Felder?
Here.
Mayor Clark?
Here.
All please rise to the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
In our deliberations and discussions this evening, may our efforts promote the good of the residents of this city and all who visit.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is to amend the agenda.
I understand, Mr. Pastu, you have a request for an item to be added or changed on the agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor. We're going to ask for a closed session regarding pending litigation. I'll let City Attorney.
I'll let City Attorney Matt Buds talk a little bit more about it.
Sure.
Your Honor, there's been some developments in the matters involving 44 Monroe LLC, and I'd like to give counsel an update on those matters in closed session, and that's the reason for the request for the amendment.
Your Honor, I'll move that after presentation 2497, we add, I move that we go into closed session to discuss pending litigation involving 44 Monroe LLC and 48 Monroe LLC.
Second. This is a motion by Counselor Michael Linsch, supported by Counselor Lamore, that inserted the agenda as a closed session regarding pending litigation as stated and for the location stated. Other questions from counsel? Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Whitman?
Yes.
Eiko Angeli?
Yes.
Vining?
Yes.
Germany?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Next item, please.
Citizen comments.
If there's any comments from those present here this evening not related to an agenda item, now would be the time to make those comments. Obviously, we have an earlier start time today for those that are here. Of course, that's why you're here, and those that are watching, and hopefully are watching here at 6:00 because of the important topic and the time that's going to be necessary for that. But we still want them to take any comments of those maybe present here this evening not related to the agenda item. If there is, just please come forward and state your name and address.
Just right here, that's fine. Thank you. Yes. That way the clerk can be able to record your message, and, oh, you're good. Thank you. Yes, your name, please.
Mayor Clark, no, only the council, only the number one, granddaughter, Kelly.
Okay.
Yeah. I came tonight because of what happened on the Fourth of July. I, where I live up there turned into a war zone up in front of Orchard East School. They stayed out shooting till 3:30 in the morning, and saw the police ride about a couple of times slowly, but they just kept going. I think they're afraid I would be, because he wouldn't know if they were shooting bombs or, oh, they shook out of windows. I broke one here that shot my window stuff came all in to my bedroom through the screen, and it lit up like lightning. And I tried to get out the bed. I'm sick and hard to walk now. I like to hurt myself. I wanted to know if something they can do about that.
Well, I know that.
How the time that they can stop it.
Well, there is regulations regarding fireworks. The time that it's permissible was recently changed by the state legislators of when we could, people have the opportunity, but that doesn't permit them to light off fireworks on public property or property that's not owned by themselves. And then, of course, the timeframe depends on the day. There's days within the legislation, but it's 11:45 PM is the latest. But oddly enough, I heard something last night off in the distance. I don't know where it was from. But the state is the one that set the legislation. I'm glad you brought this up, because I thought about some of the comments I've received from residents, and I think there's some action that we may be, at least I think we may be looking forward to reviewing that, or what maybe could be greater regulated here within the city regarding that, plus give the police and any responder the opportunity to address those more from a local ordinance as well. So I'm going to look at Mr. Pastu, maybe some comments he might have, because those comments will be forwarded on to the city manager to make sure that we have conversation with our public safety. Vince?
In this case here, we'll just follow up with Chief McCormick regarding any response to the complaint that was received, and then probably in a general sense also to see what other complaints that we may have had. I know that we actually denied a couple of block parties with concern that this would be going on all day long. So the reality of it is, we'll follow back up, and I'll send something back to City Council and certainly to our resident here.
They wasn't shooting any place in Monroe like they do on the Orchard East School ground up there, where we live at. They did it last year, but they stopped at about 2:00. This time it was 3:30 in the morning. Yeah.
Well, I think probably something that we should be prepared for, and if they don't start there, then they won't be able to finish there, and as late as you said. So I appreciate you letting us know that. As Mr. Pastu said, he'll review that with the chief of police, but also make sure that that's on our list of items where it seems those want to use other property other than their own to light off fireworks. And of course, as we talked about that before the Fourth of July at our last meeting, both from the police and the fire side, there's a response that's needed, because, you know, that's where sometimes complications come, when people are not cautious how and where they light fireworks off. So I appreciate the comments.
Somebody did call them, but most of the time you call them, they say they can't do nothing about anything anymore. I wonder what happened until they lost. When my kids was young, they had to stop shooting about 10, 11. If anybody did shoot, they got fined, I think it was $25. And now they're just turning in like a war zone or something. They all lit up coming back by with houses and everywhere. If that be going on next year, I'm going to have to rent me a room or something and go to senior citizen. They're not allowed to shoot out there. So, anyway, thanks for.
Well, thank you for your comments, and I think it's something we put on the list for next year in that particular area regarding the property you're talking about. Thank you.
Oh, this is what came back, hit my screen, and all the fine stuff went through it.
Unfortunately, what we find is people want to light fireworks off, and they don't understand the difference between a kind of a personal use versus commercial use and the type of fireworks or lighting.
Yeah. My grandson, family law, he had just got back in from Iraq, and he said this the kind of stuff they be shooting over there shouldn't be shot in a resident.
That is correct. That is correct.
Okay.
Yes, Counselman?
Can we get that? Can we? The only reason why is I think if we have, if we have an opportunity, Vince, it'd be nice to show this, it'd be nice to show this to Representative Bellino.
Yeah.
On what's being shot in residential areas as part of an opportunity maybe to change the state statute. I'll pass it down.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you.
Comments from those present here this evening not related to an agenda item? Seeing none. Clerk, next item, please.
Next item is the consent agenda, and for item B, approval of payments, the amount should read $2,411,063.25. 2411-063.25.
Those two items that are still on, that are on the consent agenda, which is the approval of minutes and approval of payments, and is there any items on the consent agenda wish to be discussed? Counselman Felder? No? If not, a motion would be ordered. Do you have one?
I motion that all items on the consent agenda be accepted, placed on file, and recommendations carried out.
Motion by Counselman Felder, supported by Counselor Lamore, the items on the consent agenda be accepted and placed on file as presented. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselperson Whitman?
Yes.
Eiko Angeli?
Yes.
Germany?
Yes.
Lamore?
Yes.
Felder?
Yes.
Mayor Clark?
Yes.
Clerk, next item, please.
The next item is a presentation, item 2497, Public Safety Assessment Presentation by Fitch and Associates.
Thank you. Mr. Pastu, I think you have some introduction as well as some opening information.
All right. Thank you, Your Honor. Again, let me reintroduce Guillermo Fuentes, project lead with Fitch and Associates. He's here to provide an update regarding the assessment. Tonight's presentation, the review, the data compiled from our local police, fire, and dispatch systems, insights gathered from interviews with city council, city administration, respective chiefs and their confidant staff, as well as frontline employees, responses from an employee survey addressing a wide range of operational issues. Their professional observations that included site visit of our facilities, and then their assessment of this information in the context of the operational and financial challenges. If you recall, on the front end of this process, almost six months ago, we discussed balancing financial resource availability and acceptable service levels. This is important feedback that the city council must provide the consultant to formulate a short-term and long-term plan. The feeling is that the data and its understanding will help council in articulating this balance with Fitch and Associates. Tonight's presentation, which is almost 100 slides, is the next step in this process. There's a great deal of information to digest tonight. Over the next few weeks, after receiving tonight's presentation, council, we'd ask you certainly to review it. Feel free to discuss it with the chiefs and be prepared for further dialogue with Fitch and Associates. We're not asking for any decisions tonight. The plan would be to schedule another series of meetings, hopefully here in the next month with Fitch and city council to provide direction regarding the development of a short and long-term plan. The last step in this process is ultimately a completed report publicly presented outlining the recommended plans, both short and long-term, along with implementation strategy. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Fuentes to go through his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Pastu. Just going to make a note, I don't know if the clerk or also for in the back of our, from our impact, I'm looking over, I see that most of the screens are lit up except in front of us, except for Counselor Vining in mine, but that's okay, because we can watch it behind, just point to us as well. So I think that we're good to go. Unless there's something I'm supposed to hit, but I don't think there is.
I'm sure they will.
All right, I'm sure they will. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pastu. Please do so. Guillermo, it's great to see you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Mayors. Thank you, council members. I want to start by thanking all your staff here. The chiefs collaborated very heavily with this project. The data was not an easy data to mine, partly because of the legacy CAD systems and records management systems that you have. We had to reconstruct a lot of this data that you're going to see today. Your staff is also very forthcoming in what they believe works, doesn't work, and you'll see it in the survey results. As I mentioned, the first time I came in front of council, our firm is known for its data. We are a largely objective firm, and part of the process today is really to try to impart on you what your system does, looking at it through the lens of data rather than anecdotally, so that you can make decisions moving forward based on facts. Now, it is almost 100 slides. There's a lot of data. I'm not one of those that says wait till the end. So as we go, each slide, just feel free to interrupt me, ask a question, go, it's going to be more of a conversation. Often, I do these more like work sessions, so they're more interactive. This is a little bit more formal, but it is important, because when we get to the end of this, the next steps are going to be ourselves, our team with your chiefs, discussing what does that mean to them, and then, again, coming back with you individually and discussing what it means for you, and then what your options are, because then from there, we need to create what the option pathways are that are going to make this a successful system, a sustainable system into the future. A little bit about how we look at this, we first look at it globally. So our first look is going to be a community response, so we really look at what your system did as a whole, and then we break it into some of its parts. So there's a dispatch component, where the call intake happens, then there's a police component, and there's a fire component and an EMS component. And interestingly enough about public safety departments, whenever you're looking at a public safety department, you're not looking at an agency, rather an activity. And I'll keep coming back and forth, because you'll see several crossovers, especially, how would I put this, you're a public safety light system, so you really are more of a traditional fire and police service with a lot of overlapping parts. So that creates another additional level of sophistication to your system, that part of that gives you excellent service, part of that is very costly. We'll walk through a lot of the data, and my hope is that you understand where the crossovers occur, where you got benefit, and where the crossovers occur and you don't have benefit. And finally, we finish with the survey results. I think we often miss hearing our staff, and when the staff speaks, sometimes it's important to understand where they are, because there are, from a staff perspective, significant changes that are needed in this system. So a little bit about how we looked at the data. So the community response, we collected everything from 2014 to 2018 data for the analysis. We really focused on 2018. Everything from 2014 through 2018 was much more trending related. We wanted to know how you're trending up or down. We also looked at dispatches. So there's, a dispatch is an individual incident or event. A response can be variable units going to a single incident and event, and we'll come back to that a lot, because again, in your system design, you purposely overassign. And when over, we overassign to an event, that's where we have cost overlays. All right. So, and then we kind of talk a little bit about canceled calls. Another particularity for the police department specifically is the concept of self-initiated. It's unique to the police perspective. Only police departments have self-initiated calls, and in your system, it represents about 30% of your activity is directed by the police officer. And I'll speak through that a little bit as we go through the data, because there's some telling pieces there. There's also another anomaly. We normally can separate your call activity from the moment you receive the call. This is particularly true for the fire department, and then the time they place themselves en route to go on scene. 63% of your dataset did not have that capacity, so we blended from call received to arrive on scene. Right? If you picture the fire department, just to give you an anecdotal piece of that, the fire department, when they get a call, they have to put on their bunker gear, get in their trucks, get going. Usually, we can measure that. That's a separate moment, and then we measure how long the travel time is. In this particular case, we had to blend the two. It's not significant, I'll tell you upfront, in your case, because your response times are excellent across the board. So here's a little bit about your number of incidences. The first telling moment is about 73% of your total activity is a police-based activity model. So you're very heavily police-oriented as far as emergency response goes. And there's a lot of reasons for that. This is not that unusual within departments. We normally see about six times the activity level of police versus a fire. This is right in that wheelhouse. The second thing you'll notice is EMS is the second key category, and then fire lives at around 737 pure fire calls a year. And you also had a pretty high canceled rate, about 2,000 cancellations, 1,933 canceled calls. So a little bit about busyness and then responses, and this is the first observation I think people need to focus on as a council and as an audience. So your police program is a very traditional police program from a data perspective. It does about 15,000 calls, about 24,000 responses will go to that. That's not unusual. You often have, in domestic violence and assault cases, multiple units. So that's a very common model. The EMS model, which is your medical response, is significantly over-serviced. You have about 3,226 calls. You're sending about 11,543 responses to that. 3.6 responders show up to every medical call. And I'll speak a little bit in the EMS section about what really is required, but if you think about it, that's because we send the private ambulance response, the paramedic firefighter first response, and a police response to each one of those events. And that duplication is what's causing that 3.6 responders per event. Then in the fire, you have 737 and about 1,696 responses, 2.3, not that unusual. Actually, that's pretty much in the wheelhouse. You'll see that it's actually a lot higher when we do the fire side section. It is a lot higher, but those are usually mutual aid or auto-matic aids that are showing up to your fire calls, so that you have a lot more capacity on the fire grounds. But as far as your own system assignment, you're assigning about two units to them. Average calls per month. So you have a pretty significant fluctuation. You go from about 50 calls per day per month on your low end, January, February, March, and you peak at around 60 in your summer months. So you do have quite a bit of fluctuation, usually not what we want to see in northern states and Canada, for example, because we all want to take vacation in the summer. So it's usually non-correspondent, so that's really an observation. You probably have one of the, your overtime is probably consumed pretty heavily in the summer months versus your winter month just because of that. Your average hour of the day of the week, you have a very slow Sunday compared to your rest of the week. Interestingly enough, your Wednesday is one of your busier days, and Saturday, we expect. Also to note on this chart is the fact that your police response is still predominant. So what you're looking there is your police is the green, right? EMS is the blue, and then the red is the fire response. And so every day, you have a predominance of police response and a small portion of your call activity is being fire response. Your average calls per day, no real difference. I'll ask you to try to remember this number, because this is all your calls rolled up. You roll about three calls at your peak an hour, and your low end response is around less than a call an hour around 5:00, 6:00 in the morning. You're rolling a little less than a call an hour. And why is that important? Because as you titrate a public safety system, so as you're looking at your public safety department and you're assigning, on average, two to three units per call, you can see how at three or four calls, your level of activity that you're sending people to will overwhelm your resources. So you've got to be careful when you're balancing out a system to make sure that your resources, allocation of resources, match the demand that you have. This is a little bit of a busy chart. I left it in just because it kind of starts down the program to police and fire and EMS response. So let me talk through that. Your program is police. So police respond to 15,800 of the police calls. The number of units they assign, police assigned to those calls is 24,000 units, all of those being police. About 21 minutes are spent on average for response. They have a total amount of busy hour, 8,000. If you look at the EMS response, police goes to about 1,942 EMS responses, and they send often a vehicle or two, because they get to about 3,200 responses from a police response to those EMS calls. And same thing with fire, they go to 389 fire, rated responses, about 713 units. If you look at the fire department, they do a one-for-one on almost all their fire calls. So if you look at the police calls, they go to about 148 police responses, and they use about 172 apparatuses. So generally, they're always going single unit to police responses. You look at their EMS calls, they generally are sending only one responder to an EMS call, 3,000 responses, 3,400 assignments, so that means that they're rolling one-to-one. And fire, they're very close to a one-to-one also. And that's a staffing level thing, so they're not really sending two or three. What you're normally getting from the city response on a fire call is a fire apparatus plus some sort of public safety officer, because the numbers would support that you have more. And I'll show you another slide. EMS is the same way. EMS, by the way, I, we use EMS generically in this report. It's referring to the third service private provider that does all your transports. Average dispatch time and average turnout time. This was the first time we saw the numbers when we pulled them out, and I'll have to point out to council that from a dispatch perspective, and we do a whole section for you on dispatch, it is particularly slow. So what your fire department has been telling you that they're slow in dispatch, they are slow in dispatch. Their average response for EMS is 3.2 minutes to get a call rolling, and the fire is 2.7 minutes to get a call rolling. Police is a little different. They are slow for police as well, but police is exempt from performance metrics in dispatch. For whatever reason, that's, it's a historical piece, and NINA, National Emergency Numbers Association, recognized early on, the police, because they hold calls, because they do things in dispatch, it's a little different than both fire and EMS, which is all about assignment, they are exempt. So while you are slow, it isn't as big a thing as you are being slow in EMS and fire. When you look at your EMS and fire calls, though, you'll notice one, one of the first anomalies that comes out. Fire and EMS are very fast to get on scene, so both your private providers rise pretty quickly, and your fire department arrives very quickly to EMS calls and fire calls, but their variability is very little. And I'll show in another graph, but they're about six minutes to arrive on scene from dispatch and assign travel time, but they arrive almost simultaneously, and there's a, there's a deficit to doing that that way. When we look at the first arriving scene, 90% of the time, you arrive in about 6.4 minutes from the moment a call is initiated to somebody arriving, which would be excellent by anybody's standards. Most systems are designed at 8 minutes 59 seconds in response, so you're about two minutes better than what is loosely held as a recommendation for response. This is even more impressive, 40% of them are done in under two minutes. So you really are, and that's partly your automated response for your police department that's out there, that's helping that response time. So when we look at each agency and then each program, so police do 99.7% of all their calls. Only 0.2% of their calls will a fire department arrive before them on a police call, and 0.1% of the time, which must have been one call where they arrived, the private provider arrived ahead of them. And then on the corresponding box next to it, you'll see the response time itself. So police arrive about 8.6 minutes, 99% of the time. The time the fire units did beat them, their average was, the total response time, average response time was 9.4 minutes, and the ambulance was 6.9 minutes. I can actually explain that when you see the graph later. I have a graph for the fire, a police department. It's partly how they do their shift handling. There's a spike because of their shifts being non-staggered, and that creates a much longer response time, citizen response time in those two hours of the day, so I'll show that to you in a little bit. In fire response, police, so if you look at the police units, they arrived first on a fire scene 35.6% of the time. The fire unit arrived 63.9% of the time, first under calls, and the ambulance 0.4% of the time. When the police unit did arrive first, it was arriving at 5.2 minutes on average. The fire response was 7.4 minutes, and the ambulance was 12.3. And again, the EMS response, overall, police units arrived 39.9% of the time first. The fire department arrived 50% of the time first, and the ambulance arrived 10% of the time first. I will point again to the net differential between the police, the fire department and the ambulance program is less than 0.1. So it's really they arrive very close together in medical response. You have an overabundance of response to medicine. A little bit about dispatch performance now. Any questions on the general? I kind of ran through a whole bunch of numbers that you guys, no, yes, maybe?
Counsel. Counselman Felder?
It seems like we're kind of getting beat up on the dispatch times, but I don't, I believe we dispatched through Monroe County?
Yes.
So we don't have a whole heck of a lot of control over that front end. A fire unit to a fire call essentially has the same amount of time to dispatch that call as to actually getting gear and drive and arrive on scene.
Yes. So this, just a little context in that. This is not a dispatch study. There are, you know, you, there are reasons for that. There are process problems in dispatch that are obvious when you look at these kinds of numbers. The way most communities, when they get dispatched by a third-party county system, is they obligate the dispatch center, when they have the right technology, to produce numbers regularly so that you can keep track of what their performance is. Clearly, this is probably new to them as well. They probably don't know what their actual performance is.
Yeah.
And so not knowing your performance makes it very difficult to improve your performance.
Because they're on a very new system themselves.
Right.
This one.
Right. And we're going to talk about that system as well, because going to a new system's a good thing if you take advantage of the new system. If you're going to go to a new system but do the same things you were doing with the old system, then you probably disadvantage your system, because you're taking longer to do these calls and not necessarily getting any benefit from the length of time you're spending with the call taker. A little bit about dispatch performance. So dispatch performance, unlike others, does have regulations. So both NINA operational standards and NFPA 1221 define what their expectation of performance should be within a dispatch environment. And the reason that's important is you can then hold people accountable to how close are you to those standards, whether or not they meet them, may or may not be relevant, but at least you have some benchmarks to work against. The 1221 has changed this year. They came up with a smaller grouping for emergency call types, but the concepts stay exactly the same. So basically, what they're saying is 95% of all calls must be answered within 15 seconds, and 99% of all calls in 40 seconds. That's from the moment the phone rings to somebody answering that call. NINA operational standard says it's 90% of the time in 10 seconds. So both of them have a pretty stringent response obligation. Somebody's calling within three rings, somebody should be answering that phone. The next one is 95% of emergency dispatching should be completed within 60 seconds. So nine times out of a hundred, I should be getting a resource dispatched to a fire or medical call within sixty seconds. If you remember, your average was three point two minutes and two point something minutes. So your average is way past the ninetieth. We will get into the ninetieth uh on the next slide. So ninetieth means nine times out of a hundred, ninety times out of a hundred or nine times out of ten, you are meeting a performance standard. That's called a reliability factor rather than the average. An average doesn't demonstrate reliability. An average demonstrates what commonly occurs when you merge fast and slow. That's your middle ground, that's your average. A ninetieth percentile is a reliability standard. It says nine times out of ten, I will meet this objective. When you look at your nine times out of ten and your average is there they are. So your police, that's why I say even notwithstanding the fact that they don't have any criteria for performance and dispatch and policing, they're exempt uh from that. Their ninetieth percentile is six hundred and eleven seconds or just over ten minutes, which by anybody's standards is slow. Um even if you're holding and queuing calls and you, you should have an informational model that allows the police service to be aware of all the calls that are in the queue or how they're being assigned. Um so they're holding calls uh for, for significant periods of time. The poli, the fire and EMS are two forty-five and two oh nine. So if correspondingly, they're both over, one's over four minutes and one's over three minutes uh to respond. So at the ninetieth percentile, you are having a much slower uh response from dispatch than you need to be, to be a high-performance fire or EMS system.
Can you explain that in more detail when you talk about dispatch time? Is that the time from the call to the time they leave the station?
The call till they're assigned.
The call until they're assigned.
Right, so a dispatch moment interval is, is really got two moments. The phone rings, the phone is picked up or first keystroke, and then there's an assignment. So those two, right? So I gotta pick up the phone, I gotta talk to the person and I gotta assign a unit. Those are really the things that are occurring in dispatch. The problem with the dispatch center, I can, and I, I can't speak intelligently, I didn't do a review in there, so it's not, and it's not part of this per se because like you mentioned, it's part of the county. But you clearly have not put an objective in front of them, so they are doing what they're doing. And with MPDS, which they put in the medical priority dispatch system, they put in, I'll, I'll speak a little bit to a little later. Um it has a lot more call, uh questions to ask. So if they're waiting right to the end of the protocol to assign, they can be waiting a long time because the lower determinant calls, the calls that are non-emergency calls, they can, they can go twenty, thirty cards deep, questions deep before they assign. On life-threatening emergencies are pretty short on cardiac arrest and respiratories and those kind of things. They only ask six or seven questions. But as you get to lower and lower acuity calls, they ask more and more questions. It will drive out your response times significantly. So there are things in process that you have to change in your dispatch center uh for that to be done well.
So maybe that's my follow-up to councilman's question is, so that response time, is that um the type of calls, are they vetted it? Is this collectively all or is it like maybe higher emergency versus?
Collectively all, but I, I'll, I'll show you later.
Okay.
Because I do have it in here, but you undercategorize calls as well. When I said you didn't take advantage of the new system, you still collapse almost all of that into three or four assignment codes, right? So since you're doing that, you're taking fifteen hundred potential outputs that the, the, the protocol has and you're trying to jam them into four. So you're over triaging and uh over assigning resources all the time. You're not using the granularity the program has.
I understand, thanks.
Um so first units dispatch, this is all of them all rolled up. The first units dispatch at the ninetieth percentile, about seven point seven minutes. Um that's the ninetieth percentile, police is obviously pulling that one out. So police, the ninetieth percentile for police is ten point two minutes to get assigned from the moment they pick up the phone till the moment they assign a resource. For the fire units, and this is really, I focus on this, these for the fire and EMS is where it's more worrisome for me. Uh the ninetieth percentile of the dispatch units for a fire is, is four minutes. And the ninetieth percentile for uh medical, no, this is for fire, sorry. The other was medical, fire dispatch units was three point three minutes.
I just want to go over this again, okay? Uh on the dispatch, so you're talking, call comes in to the county dispatch nine one one. That operator or that coordinator make, makes a decision on what unit they need to assign. And that's what some of these numbers are reflecting.
Taking three.
It's reflecting what's going on at county dispatch, not what's the dispatch time or the response times for police and fire.
No, you're very fast. Your, your road time is about three minutes and when we get into each section, I'll show you each one of your road responses.
This is, as councilman Felder was saying, this is an issue that's out of our control, but one that is impacting our level of service.
You're paying for it. So the only way to offset response time, so response time from a, what we like to say in the industry, a hello to hello, the moment I pick up the phone and say hello to the moment a resource arrives and says hello, that's really the, the experience that your citizens receive. They don't really care whether it's, you know, four minutes on the dispatch side and two minutes on the roadside or four minutes on the roadside and two minutes on the dispatch side. The six-minute experience is exactly the same for them. So one of the important factors why we look at your dispatch, even though we know it's not in your control, is that to give good response on this side of the equation, you have to have a lot of resources at the ready because your dispatch time is, is consuming your resource time.
So I think it's followed to councilman as well. I think you, you stated the, you know, it might be the fact that we don't, haven't presented what our objective is with the dispatch and having that conversation, honestly, he's gonna address, but at least we'll have an understanding of what some expectations are between both. So my other, that's what I heard you say. So my other question was, is this accounting for calls that all are responding to? Cause I, there'll be some calls that, that the fire may not get that goes to the police on dispatch and maybe the other way we go to fire that wouldn't necessarily go to police. I was trying to, I know you probably have it somewhere in your slides.
No, each one of these are separated.
These are separate, okay.
Distribution of dispatch time of fire dispatch units only.
Okay.
That's how long it's taking them to figure out what.
That's right.
That there is a fire or not.
Yeah.
And then I'm assigning and who am I assigning?
Okay.
It is really a process piece.
Yeah.
In my, my guess, and I'm, I'm simply speculating here, so you can't say he told me something because I'm.
Right, right, right.
Caveating it uh completely, is that they're just going too far, too deep in the protocol. Generally, good dispatching occurs, I have enough information to assign, I assign and I continue doing the protocol behind it. So it doesn't matter. Uh once I've gathered the significant information, whatever you decide at a local level of significant information, I can then generally assign the resource that I want to assign and continue collecting information while resources are rolling. That's really best practice and that would collapse a lot of your response time. Now again, I say that and I'll caveat that's a hundred different ways, but your response time in this community is excellent. It's, it's at six minutes, a ninetieth percentile, it really, you, you're not, you can't expect to be much faster. The question is, can you wean some resources out and maintain? So if I took two minutes out of dispatch, what could I do with those two minutes in the field? That's a real question. Now that becomes a significant value proposition for you. But it, whether the six minutes, the six minutes is excellent. I wouldn't fix that.
Council fellow.
So it looked like the uh police side was actually pretty fast. Usually they're responding within four or five minutes, but they got killed on dispatch. That was like ninety-nine and a half minutes. Is that because they're generally lower priority calls and further and further down that tree?
Police, yes, police hold calls purposefully. What you need is to have the granular knowledge or the police chief needs to have the granular knowledge of what they're holding. Because it could be, I'll give you a common that you, the young lady came here talking about Fourth of July, right? Noise complaint is a very common one. They'll send the car and he deals it with whoever deals with it. Usually if they have a noise complaint going to the same address, they'll want to hold it for the same police officer to come back and say, listen, I, I came here, you know, twenty minutes ago, uh if I have to come back, I'm shutting the whole thing down. Those kind of things, so they'll hold a call. So if that police officer is doing something else, they'll hold it in the queue. So it's not that unusual to see bizarre times from police. They also benefit from uh in your case, thirty percent of your calls being self-initiated. So the dispatch time there is only fifteen seconds, right? So if you look at a police queue, this is not that uncommon. A police queue on dispatch, this is uh all units, this is a police unit. And so police calls, if you look at the fifteen to thirty-second range, they have a bunch of calls living there. And that's really not dispatch time, that's police self-initiated calls that they call on dispatch. Could you just open up an incident for me? Or they do it in their MDTs. Here's a new incident number, so that, that's helping them on their end. You, your more concerning numbers to look at is everything past the hundred and twenty minute, hundred and twenty seconds going forward and understanding why that's occurring. It could be totally legitimate, but it could be that you need some, some real intervention there.
But I mean, that, if I may, your honor, that, that almost makes the problem seem worse. Because if I have those really, if I have those few incidences where, hey, someone's speeding, I'm gonna pull him over. It's twenty seconds between the time I turn on my lights and they pull over to the side of the road and that's an incident, that's a response time and that was twenty seconds. And my average is still.
Yes.
Nine minutes.
Yeah.
That means there's a lot of incidents, there are a lot more than that.
What I'm, yes, what I'm suggesting to you though is that it's a full study on itself. You need to, I'm making you aware that you have an issue in your dispatch times. Um you are getting new CAD systems, new RMS systems put into dispatch. But my, my guess is that you probably need a level of analysis done strictly for dispatch, somebody to come in and look at your dispatch center. And then you can set your own criteria and if you let me get to the EMS portion, I will talk you through some of that because again, I think part of that was they implemented in dispatch, here's my new EMS system that I'm gonna take all these calls with. And the input from the user community, the, the, the people they service, all your communities that do EMS response were not involved in how that was gonna translate for the responder. Because you have a lot of choices in dispatch. You can choose right off a chief complaint, what's wrong with you? I have chest pain. Good enough, I'm sending. Or I can ask you, how, how long was the chest pain? When did it start? How does it feel? Where's it going? Blah, blah, blah. Ask six, eight, ten, twelve questions and then assign you. So there's a lot of choices on how and why things occur. So you have to be, in, in dispatch environments, you have to have a much more granular look. I'm just saying from a high level, at the forty-thousand-foot level, they're too slow.
Well, I sure hope you get a call from the county in the next couple of days.
Well, they, yes, they can, but I mean, I think that's really something that you need to look into and see what you want to do with that, if you want to do something with that. At least recognize that that's there. So part of the performance metric and the reason I bother looking at it for you is really because from a performance metric, if they improved, you do have some flexibility on this side with resources. That, that balancing act is still totally within your power. You're subsidizing for performance. All right, so the police service. Police service are obviously the largest department uh of, from a call activity, they do five fifteen thousand eight hundred and three total incidents averaging forty-three uh incidents per day. The largest of all of those and averaging about two thousand of those calls a year and six, six calls per day, thirty percent of them are what, they are self-initiated and the number one is property check. Now, property check in your environment is not a traditional property check. So I'm gonna kind of canvas that for you. And property check is the police officer maybe rolling down and saying, I'm gonna check Russell Street. I'll pick my own street. That's a property check and it will get logged in as a check. Some of them are assigned, they also do, you, you do something that we have stopped in most police environment. You still do, people that leave for a long extended period of time, you actually do checks for them, which is kind of a nice thing to do, but a lot of police departments have stopped that. So you offer some additional services. So property check is a pretty large value. We did notice in the self-initiated that what, what uh Chief Bevan did for us is she went back through all the self-assigned calls uh in twenty nineteen. She went through all the police officers' reports, looked at all the self-initiated, self-initiated uh assignments and her assessment would, was closer to about seventy-five percent of the calls that were self-initiated should have been in the self-initiated bucket. So there's a quality aspect of that data set that's a little off. We check it a lot, Fitch is, is big on that because that's an assignment value that's gonna drive work, but not necessarily work that you decided you wanted done. It's just, it's the discretion that police officers have. It's the only one, so I, I point that out, but only police services do that. It's not a fire or EMS in their nature.
Could you please repeat that? Seventy-five percent of the self-initiated calls are, I missed that.
She said seventy-five percent were about, were properly categorized as self-initiated. In other words, twenty-five percent probably shouldn't have been self-initiated calls. You know, but she went through every log, so everybody's record and read them all through.
If you scrutinize anybody's system, you'll probably find something.
Yeah, uh, yes, but uh one of the, the learnings for us and for anybody who's in law enforcement is that often happens, we tend to under QA, under quality assurance or, or review self-initiated calls. And one of our large suggestions is that you should be doing pretty heavy um quality assurance on what are you self-initiating on. Um it should have some harmony. You, you don't want huge disparity between one shift and another. There's a lot of things that come with that. Um but for, for, from a statistical perspec, perspective, there is some tuning that needs to happen on the self-initiated calls. So you'll see all the categories as we move through the police categories. We do separate calls per day that are citizen-initiated and calls per day that are self-initiated. Does some of the two always represent your uh call type? Your largest category, like I mentioned, is property check. Uh that represents sixty-four percent of all your self-initiated, traffic is seventy-one percent, uh but they're lower in, in numbers. Um and then you go through, traffic's a normal self-initiated call. That's, we would expect, you know, very few citizens to call you in and tell you that there's a car speeding. Um the rest though, uh Chief Bevan went over them. She was very satisfied with the breakdown. She thought it was actually pretty common breakdown of policing environment. So we didn't see anything that was anomalous or jumped off the page of it. These are just a, a different representation of, of calls per month. Uh and then what was self-initiated calls per month and what's uh calls per service um started by the population. Same pattern that you saw in the general. Again, the police department drive the volume of your public safety agencies. Days of the week, no surprise there. Uh Sunday is much lower than, than the rest of the week. One of the things that's interesting though, and I'll say this entirely, of all the public safeties that you do, fire, police and, and first response, you staff the same way. So you're not taking advantage really, the two-to-two peak, chief, it's gone for a while now, right? Your two-to-two peak. Yeah, so um you're, you're, you staff as if there was no fluctuation in demand. So you're also not taking advantage of that mobility. There are schedules that are better suited to try to maximize uh those things. Um so there's, there's some discussion to be had around that. There's your total work per day. I didn't graph this one, I don't know why, uh but basically you call averages at midnight around four. It drops to a low of about one point five calls at six in the morning and then at a high is about five point five uh calls occurring. The, not surprising, but about twenty thousand responses, the PSO units combined to make twenty thousand of the total responses or ninety percent of all the calls. So your PSOs are busy, they actually do go to all the calls, they go to all the fire calls, all the EMS calls and they handle the bulk of the frontline uh calls. So you, you are um, you're a pretty busy police service from that perspective. Uh total time on task is about, uh average time on task is twenty-one minutes. Um and EMS and fire units provide about two percent of police response. So the police department handles mostly the police department calls. This is just for your own knowledge, I don't know that it has that much value. I'm not sure the categorization, they have a central portion, a western portion, a southeastern portion, eastern portion of the city. Uh we did break it down by each wherever we could identify them. A central portion of the city seems to have a disproportionate amount of calls. I don't know if that's valid or not, but that seems to be what the statistics are saying. Um and then the non-PSO units, um what their workload are. Your lieutenants actually attend a, a significant amount of calls considering the rank they hold. Um and the rest are pretty standard. Again, we reviewed that for consistency with other services. We didn't see anything that was anomalous there. Uh then we looked at how many average units are being assigned to see if you're over assigning or under assigning by category. Um and when we looked at that, we thought it was actually a pretty good assignment distribution ratio. So disturbances and domestic violences, having two or three units arrive on scene for those, that's not unusual. That's what you would expect. You wouldn't want them to be showing up on their own. And larceny um and property checks are, are the lowest end of one or one point two. Traffic is at one point three and, and considering today's environment with concealed carry and those kinds of situations today, uh we're seeing more and more actually assigned two cars for traffic stops now. It's, it's not unusual to see departments having complete two, two-car stops. So you may expect that one to climb in the future. But right now, your distribution margin on the police department is actually pretty clean. Fifty-three percent of them are single, an additional thirty-four go to two and then the rest is marginal. They get three units assigned or four units assigned on a police call. So none of that is unusual. That's actually pretty much right in the line with what a police department, we would expect to see in a police department. This is a little bit unusual, there is no staggering of shifts. So what we do here is we take all your call activity and that's your uh green uh calls. So this is your citizen-initiated calls. We plot them across and then we. and then we get you, give you your average response time, and then your ninetieth percentile response time. And you can see that during the times that they're off duty, and I have to do this in, in chambers to have a different discussion, but if you knew what times the police are not working, your police response times are significantly longer in those times. So when I mentioned before that sometimes the fire department, or the few times they get there first, or the EMS gets there first, it's most probably within those two periods. Those two periods need to have something done to that. There's a scheduling challenge there, you need to stagger some shifts or do something that is gonna help correct that, those two moments in your time. Fire service, that's my police service, I can switch over to fire. Any questions on the police?
Other councilor questions, seeing none?
No, move on to fire. So fire is seven hundred and thirty-seven total fire incidents. So when we talk about fire incidences, they're not, not all fire incidences are created equal. Of the structure fire, outside fire, vehicle fires, so the three that you would consider actively fighting a fire, represents eighty-nine calls in a year. So the largest fire category is assist and alarm, calls averaging about point eight and point five per day respectively. So here's your breakdown, structure fires, um, outside fires, and vehicle fires, the, the three big ones. Alarms represent a hundred and seventy-nine calls, wires down eighty-four, fire assist is two eighty, hazmat's twenty-two, and fire others eighty-three. So that's your breakdown of, of call activity in the fire department. Not unusual, by the way, that's pretty common across the United States with what we're seeing. Go ahead.
Operationalize for me, if you will, fire assist.
Fire assist is any assist, some of it is assist other communities, some of it is assists population.
Right, but some of those assistances will be structure fires, won't they?
Um, only if they're categorized that way. Usually if it's a structure fire per se, it's categorized as a structure fire, it will come into the structure fire category. Most of this is assist, public assist, right? Lift assist is a, an assist category for fire, or an assist, any assistance that's not directly related to a fire activity. Most departments have an other, you guys have an assist category.
Okay, that's why it was unclear.
So fire calls per month, related, you got a number of calls there, and this is how variability on it. Um, you, you, you live a very large variability in February, and we didn't know if it was an anomaly in our data or not, but you go to thirty-eight, like half your call activity of September happens in February. And we don't know, I don't have an explanation for you on that, it just seems like February is quite time for fire departments. Average fire calls per month is one point nine to a high of two point seven. And fire-related calls by day of the week, uh, variability is, is about the same, uh, pretty consistent across. You don't have a large variability in, in days of the week. And then, um, hours of the day. This is where, if you have one to take back and start thinking through, this is your average fire call per hour. And the reason I put that up is not, this is not unusual at all, so don't look at it and say, wow, that's, that's unusual, it's not. Fire departments are by nature designed to be readiness models, they're there in case you have a fire. The challenge you have in this community is you're also a public safety agency. So you have other people that can respond to fires. So you have a blended activity level, and at nighttime, in your community specifically, you have very low fire risk. It just, it didn't, it didn't register even as a point one on our fire risk ratios per hour at the day of nighttime. So there's thought processes across both of these that have to happen. So how many, uh, workload by agency? So police responded, uh, to three hundred and eighty-nine of the fire-related calls, of the total seven hundred calls, uh, used to two units on average, seven, seven hundred and thirteen units. The fire department obviously responded to all of them, uh, they had eight hundred and ninety-six units for seven hundred and twenty-eight. Um, and EMS call, EMS went to sixty-four fire-related calls, brought eighty-seven units to those calls. This is, uh, basically the workloads, the PSO units' average busy is twenty-five minutes per, per, uh, event that they go to. Um, and then the total was twenty-seven point four, EMS is thirty-two minutes. Um, the other fire departments committed about seventy-seven minutes on average on new events, which is kind of an interesting statistic. So you do have quite a bit of support from the surrounding fire agencies into this community. When they come, they come, uh, pretty large, and then all the engines and fire trucks are down there. Nothing very unusual or surprising in that. So let's talk a little bit about the, um, workload and then what historical workload is. So in the first iteration of the International Association of Firefighters Handbook, uh, they actually put a unit hour utilization, that's what UHU stands for. So that's the amount of hours that a unit should be working over a amount of hours of work. So in this case, twenty-four hours, they set the cap. They said it should be no more than thirty percent, or eight hours of calls on call activity. It can be on other things, report writing, training, um, whatever, but it can't be on more than point three or eight hours. Twenty-four should not be spent on other activity. And there's a logic to it, it actually made quite a bit of sense if you consider it, um, that if you're, have to be awake twenty-four hours and couldn't get any rest, your capacity to think and process important information would be gone. So there is a logic to the eight hours. Do, are very similar to most communities in that about five percent of the total workload is fire-related activity. The largest category for all fire departments across the United States and, and North America, I would say, not in Europe, but in North America, is medical response. About twenty percent of their activity is actually related to medical response. It's not related to fire response. And then one percent of their activity is related to police response. Their total combined workload is twenty-four percent. But I'm gonna keep coming back to your EMS. Your problem is that all your, of the category of calls that has the least requirement for staff or personnel, is getting the highest level of personnel assigned to it. So you're a little bit of an inverted model. So EMS, in most cases EMS can be handled with two people, and you're assigning fire, police, ambulance to that one call. And if you think of the amount of calls, I, I'm surprised you haven't seen a lot of complaints on that where, you know, I, all I did was fall down, I just needed somebody to help me, and everybody showed up at the door. That's a very common complaint, and in your case, it's actually a very real complaint. You are over assigning for sure. Number of units responding by fire, this is where I think your mutual aid and your, um, audit, it must be much closer to an automatic aid and a mutual aid. Look at the structure fire right at the top. When you have an active structure fire, you're able to amass a lot of units pretty quickly to it. So your structure fire, anytime you have a structure fire, you look at the category number of units on top, you'll have, you've, of all the structure fires you had, three times you had five units, five times you had six units, three times you had seven units, nine times you had eight units on the scene, and three times you had nine units on the scene. So why do I point that out? Why is that so important? We come all the way back to that eighty-nine fire calls that we do a year. You clearly have good mutual aid and support. So the question of whether or not the public safety officers should be part of that five, six, seven, eight, nine, that's a big question you gotta ask yourself, because you're clearly getting enough support, because the vast majority of fires, you're getting somewhere between eight, three, eight, nine, six units on scene. Even if you subtracted the two that are PSO, you'd still be at the four, five, six, which are ample staffing to fight a fire. So the question of whether PSO has value on a fire, structure fire, now I'm talking only structure fire, is also something we're gonna have to discuss in the future, because the numbers, as you see, there's never one unit that only goes to a structure fire, never two, never three, never four, they start at five units arriving on scene. Outside fires, you get one unit often handles outside fires, vehicle fires, two units normally. Alarms, you get ones, twos, threes. Wires down, well, you see the rest, the rest is not as, as, as significant. Often, even in the assist, your vast majority is one truck's going to handle the call. But in the fire, the structure fires, those eighty-nine calls, you really are getting a lot of resources to those. Not a bad thing, but something that you can think about.
I guess I have a que, question on that, 'cause I've heard over the years that there's a number of personnel that are required, or there's, um, regulations on the number of units on a structure fire. So I guess where they come from wouldn't change if there was a minimum amount, so. I'm just trying to understand that.
Yes, the critical, uh, critical mass of firefighting on a, on a battleground, on a fire ground, there's NFPA seventeen-ten tries to define some of that. We do about forty studies a year in fire, um, across the country. And that's a varying degree of who can do that, who cannot. Most metro-sized departments can get to the critical mass at the seventeen-ten, and I would say most, not even all of them. Um, smaller communities have different fire tactics in order not to have to get to the amount. Because really, the amount of staff that you get on a fire call is mostly driven between interior attacks or exterior attack capacity. Right, the less people you have, the less you should put them at risk. If you have more, then you can have an intelligent interior attack, you know, two in, two out, the following, following crews, vent crews, and all those great things. But if you don't, then you have to think more harsh, harshly of how you're gonna deal with the fire ground, and are you gonna fight it from the outside? What I'm suggesting, though, is that you're going to get to an interior attack anyways, 'cause you're getting enough people on the ground. It's not, your, your neighboring community seems to step up pretty well when you need them, and I'm pretty sure you step up pretty well when they need you. So there's a good fire, um, consensus on when, when you have a fire, we need to all go to get, play that fire. That's what seems, the number seems to support.
If I may, your honor.
Counselor Felder, I'm sorry, yes.
My understanding, at least, for interior attacks, you're able to more effectively, i- in, in many cases, get at the fire and put it out more quickly. Of course, that comes with a higher danger aspect, uh, to it. I mean, there might be some positive externalities here in the property, da, uh, property damage that is foregone, uh, and, and value that is saved because of that, is that a, a factor that's, as opposed, from like urban communities like ours that have very ample response to structure fires, as opposed to like townships that are just gonna spray the, you know, if your house catches on fire, we're gonna spray it, you know, from the street, but your house is going down, you know?
So I'll give you a couple of isms on that. First, the science has demonstrated today that it's more about the material inside your house than actual, uh, interior, exterior attack. So, um, because we use a lot more polycarbonates today, we have a lot of more oil-based, uh, products. The flashover occurs considerably faster than we had the older couches, older materials, older construction types. So the question of whether, um, a faster interior attack makes significant difference, where they'll all, and again, the science doesn't really state one way or the other, would be if in a life safety issue, I have somebody trapped in the house, going in is more important in that situation. The real philosophy today in fire is we shouldn't be losing people for infrastructure, that just shouldn't happen. So there's a, a shift in, in thought process around that. Um, Dr. Knight can speak intelligently, he speaks all over the country on firefighter safety. He's a third-generation firefighter and speaks about just that concept. Why would we go in to an empty warehouse and risk our life and limb? And is it really required, and will it change anything in the outcome? So you have to think about it a little differently, I'm not saying it's, it's a good or bad idea.
I mean, here in the city of Monroe, we're a little short on empty warehouses. What I do know is that we have places like the Sawyer House, you know, we have places like Nortel Lanes, we have places like, uh, downtown Monroe and the Book Nook that, that were catching on fire, so.
Right.
So these are, these are high-value areas.
And what I can tell you on those, statistically, you had five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten or more units, six times on those structure fires. So historically, you have been able to get significant resources to it. That's what I'm just saying, I'm not, I, I cannot, that's a debate of how to fight a fire. I would have to bring Steve in, 'cause he's much better at the debate on how to fight a fire, and it's often jurisdictionally driven. Some, some jurisdictions are very heavy on interior attacks, some are very heavy on exterior attacks. There's a lot of philosophy that goes on there, what do you believe, what the value is. Um, but the science isn't as clear as, yes, you, you're much better off if you go inside, you're gonna save a lot more. That's really not, not, not being supported.
Okay, that's, that's fair. Um, and just one, uh, more question about mutual aid. Uh, for structure fires, right now, the, the policy and procedure is that we alert, uh, Monroe Township and Frenchtown Township right away.
Yes, it can automate it.
Automate it.
Letting five jurisdictions know, counting EMS, that there's a fire. And that's probably explaining some of why we have so many units, and why the response for these particular incidents, uh, is so good. And I, I think, at least I think, you want it to be. Uh, and, and, and I, I think that's a shout-out to, to all of our public safety personnel.
Hundred percent. The question becomes, as a sustainable system moving forward, whether or not you want the PSO to participate in that or not. Again, we're thinking next step, I, I'm just pointing out in different parts of the slides, here's some moments you have to have a pause and think. Is this the best way I wanna handle that? Is there other ways to handle that? What, what can we be thinking through? But I, I agree with you, there's, you obviously are, have a very robust system because you are getting to those numbers.
Five responding, I mean, forget the units, we have five responding jurisdictions.
Yeah, I believe you.
So I.
I believe you, 'cause ten or more times you got, you had six times, six events that had ten or more units arrive on scene, that's pretty significant. So this is just a graph, graphic representation of that. EMS, so let's, uh, move over to, uh, emergency medical services. This is what I was suggesting, here's one of the challenges you have, these are your categories, accidents, overdose and psychiatric, suicide, medical alarm, and then illness and other. As you can see, illness and other catches pretty much everything, eighty percent, and everybody else gets jammed into one of those four. You went to medical priority dispatch system that has fifteen hundred cards in it, and you still stick them into five categories. So you're, the, the sophistication that you could have isn't there. Of those, um, calls that we do, the medical response, I already spoke about that, thirteen hundred and twenty-six determinant codes, fourteen response options. This is what you're doing in your dispatch system. That's medical priority dispatch system, if you've never seen what that does. It's basically a question and answer, uh, structure, so it's a protocol, not, uh, policy or procedural. It's a protocol, they ask a question, it's always a yes-no answer, it always moves them to the next question. That's how it's designed. But even on a fall, if you look at a fall, the delta categories, the D, is the only high-acuity response. The bravos and alphas would be a cold response and could be probably a BLS response. So you assign three point two or three point six resources to all of them, and of those that would be considered a high-acuity problematic response, would fit in the top delta category. If you look at even what medical priority dispatch system talks about, the dispatch system, it separates that between BLS, ALS, so advanced care, life support, basic life support, hot response, lights and sirens, and cold response. So it's already titrated, the program's already intended not to have everybody go to every call. It's not intended to do what you're doing, and we're doing it. So one of the advantages or disadvantages you have is those resources going to those calls can't be reallocated to you somewhere else. And it's not surprising that some of those lower medical calls, like some of the fire calls, are causing some conflict, because you're assigning a lot of resources to a lot of, to situations that don't require them. So if you look at the alpha response, which is one of the largest categories you have, the recommendation by the protocol itself is it should be a singular unit, cold BLS response. That's what really should be. If you look at the bravo response, which is the second category, still a BLS unit, can be multiple, but should be, um, hot. The Charlie category, which is a little higher category in medical competency, is an ALS response, single unit, cold. So no lights and sirens. And only the deltas and echos require that level of effort. Fifteen to seventeen percent of your call activity requires everybody going to those calls. Let's talk a little bit about the science around that, try to leave you with a little of that. So, response times and, and, and assigning of lots of resources, hot. So there's been a bunch of studies done, and so for those who don't know, I'm a million-year-old paramedic, started in eighty-nine as a medic in the field. So in those days, medics did as much as they could possibly humanly carry in a bag, you, you carried it, you did a bunch of cool stuff, and brought patients to the hospital, right? The problem was, studies started to come out in two thousand and said, most of what we think we're doing right isn't really working the way we think it's gonna work. And that's the differentiation between us being in the public safety realm and in the medical arena. Public safety has a lot less studying done of them, medical has a huge amount of investment done in the science. So in the medicine field, they, first thing they were looking at is response times. Where does actual response time capture a differentiation or not? So, interestingly enough, of all the industries, we are the few, the only one that gets. So interestingly enough, of all the industries, we are the few, the only one that gets measured for cardiac arrest. When your heart stops beating, how many times can you bring somebody back? That's really a measure for EMS, kind of a strange one, but that's what we have. And when he did a bunch of these studies, they realized that from the moment the event happens to the moment that you can actually effectively make change is five minutes. All right, now let's go back to what is our response time in dispatch center? Your entire opportunity to save that life is gone before your wheels start to turn in traffic. So if that's the capture ratio of what you're trying to do, then in your system design, it doesn't matter that you dump the house and everybody goes appropriately. On a cardiac arrest, one percent of your calls, everybody should be going. Your chances of strong survivability in those environments with rolling inventory is zero, because your dispatch time consumed most of it up. So there are other programs, community outreach programs, AD programs that you are doing that are much more practical than uh rapid response and multi unit response to that. Not saying you shouldn't send a lot of units to that one. I would, hundred percent, got to send all of them. But that is one of those categories that the dispatch time does make a difference to you. Trauma. So we all talk a lot about trauma. Trauma is anything that you have sustained an injury uh in a significant way. And they were looking at both uh on the evidence of the eight minute response time, the golden hour. Golden hour was, I could get you to surgery within an hour. And then they did a difference between ALS and BLS and trauma. And if you look at the trauma, there is no difference if you're below or above eight minutes. Eight minutes was totally random, actually invented by a bunch of uh consultants, really. They started stick eight fifty nine everywhere, and then it was picked up by seventeen ten. But it really wasn't, uh, the science never supported the eight minute response time. It's a no man's land response time. The less than four minutes, less than eight minutes, or the golden hour, when you adjust for the mechanism of injury, there's no difference. So response timing, that doesn't matter either. And then when you look at BLS or ALS uh medical first response, adjusted for severity, there's no significant difference between PD and EMS in that environment of trauma. The studies unfortunately have not come out well for BLS or for for ALS, I mean. So these are all studies that were done. Um I'll leave you with them all. I won't, I won't bore you with all of them, but you can see as you read through the data on that, ALS and BLS, there is no difference between ALS and BLS. In general, results favor BLS. Does transport make a difference? So we're all into the, we should transport, no transport, transport's good. This is in transport in trauma. And in transport in trauma, better survivability and less permanent disability, if you transport your own person in your own car. Johns Hopkins University made a pretty, pretty good study in hundred thousand shootings. They did a pretty good retrospective study, a hundred thousand shootings and stabbings, patients from twenty ten to twenty twelve, and nearly three hundred in urban US trauma centers. Study found that two point two percent of patients who arrived in the private vehicle died versus eleven point six percent of patients who died via ambulance transport. Protocols in Pittsburgh and Chicago are, you get shot, just throw me in the back of your car, drum to the trauma center. And why do I say that? I say that because this is a, the Ontario Prehospital Advanced Life Support Study, typical Canadian studies, Opal studies. They spend more money than they need to to do a study, so they paid for everything. They paid for the equipment across the whole province, every every city had to participate. It was a ten year study, multi million dollars of expenditure and multi million patients. And this is what we're seeing across the country in years exactly in that category. I'll point to the middle category that has the seven fifty eight, eight forty eight, eight ten, that's fire, ambulance, and first response. If you drew a median line between your fire first response and your EMS response, the the average between the two is eight minutes and ten seconds. There are less than a minute difference between your first response and your transporting agency. What care can you give in one minute? There are very few situations that that would even make a difference. So you're designing a system that the most expensive proposition that you have is is public safety, and you're over assigning to calls that you don't need to, that they're creating conflict. Yeah, go ahead.
If I may, Your Honor.
That was Constable Felder.
Um. So this Ontario study is saying it's actually safer for gunshot or a stab victim to
No, that was Johns Hopkins.
Johns Hopkins, I'm sorry.
The university.
Um to to transport themselves to the hospital in their, in a, in a private vehicle. I mean.
It doesn't seem, it seems counterintuitive, doesn't it?
Even if it's true, uh, the implementation of that logistically, you know, you you have uh EMS uh or paramedics uh show up on scene, patch you up, get you stitched up, you need to go to hospital right away, uh, would you please take your your private vehicle to the hospital?
That's not what they mean at all. That's, it's not, you know, it is the concept of waiting. So what they're saying is, if you have to wait any time for a resource to carry you, you might as well just go. Because it's a definitive care model. That's all we're discovering is what we knew a thousand years ago, which was, you know, to make a little fun of my own profession, ambulance lights and sirens means free air and just go as fast as you can. That's really what we are in ALS. That's really what saved lives and not the other way around. In this, in this situation, all they were measuring was because police officers were waiting for um EMS to show up on scene. And their survival rate, Johns Hopkins noticed in Baltimore, which is a little bit of a violent city, recognized that they weren't doing as well as when the partner just picked up the police officer, threw him in the back of this cruiser, and drove him to the hospital. Till they wanted to study that. That's where that comes from.
Gotcha.
So I'm not suggesting you should change your whole model. I am not. So again, I'm walking myself back off the ledge. I'm all disclaimer this together. That's what I was trying to suggest to you, though. What I wanted to, what I was putting in these studies for is so that you could see that the literature today, the science, is starting to say that the overabundance of resources, sending all the cavalry to all these calls, simply doesn't support, there's no outcome that's going to change for that. So you have to be much more selective on how you assign resources. Who do you send to what? To be fiscally responsible, and your outcomes are going to be the same. That's really what it's suggesting to you. So that's, these are all both thinking through this, because I'm sure you're going to hear a lot from everybody else that says that's craziness, but that is what the scientists support. So how you design your system, and what I'm suggesting to you, is you have quite a bit of flexibility, because you're exactly the same as what we noticed in Ontario. Fire first response to EMS, they're getting there about the same amount of time. So now it's not about the time differential, it's about what calls you really need them on, and which calls don't you really need them on.
Question I have on your, the uh, the protocol, the A, B, C, and D. Did you say that in in Monroe, Monroe County, that
Oops, went too fast.
There's not a decision being made relative to what the protocol, everybody just goes for everything?
It's not everything, but a lot of things, a lot of things. I wouldn't say everything. I think you guys do have some distinction on calls. But this is your biggest challenge here, is because you're jamming them all into this. This is your problem. Your call categorization is too small, right? You basically, they moved to this protocol. When did they move this protocol?
Uh, as far as the the new
Medical part of this one?
Pro P O A.
Yeah.
They they are still implementing it. It's that new.
It's that new. So that when they moved that protocol, that protocol needs everybody to sit down around the table and say, okay, so now that we have thirteen hundred choices, what are we going to and how are we going to? There's actually, it takes, it's about a five day tuning session, and everybody sits in a room and kind of goes through that. Medical director's very heavily involved and says, this one has value, you go. This one you don't have value, you don't go. This one you go lights and sirens. This one's a medical first response. This one's an ALS paramedic. And it it's as granular as that, thirteen hundred and twenty six times, that all gets programmed into the CAD. And now you've started to tune your system to be much more sophisticated. The problem with unsophisticated systems is it's always about resource allocation. How do you make up for what I don't know? I just send more.
Send more.
That's that's fundamentally how your system is designed.
Yep.
So this is just your annual average EMS calls per day. Average EMS. No big change there. Again, Sunday, very quiet, needs a little thought process around that day. And here's the call activity uh for EMS, very similar to your police and fire activity. You do go down around four, five, six in the morning uh pretty heavily. Your workload by agency, so police go about uh, send, send a resource and a half about every um EMS call. Fire sends a one for one assignment, and then EMS sends a little bit more than one resource, probably for bariatric transport or other things like that. So that's how it is. And then you'll notice, though, that one of the advantages you do have is your time on scene with your EMS, because you have other responding agencies is pretty short. The the problem is, you don't pay for that EMS service, so probably would want them to be a little longer and you guys a little shorter, because they're going to, they they bill for service. So that's the statistical portion of this. Do you have any questions on the statistical portion? What I generally do, so just so kind of talking process, and then I'll jump into the survey, because I think it it's very telling. I generally let everybody digest this information, then I either set up a go to meeting with my backs, go over it individually with you, so you can have questions to answer back. Uh same thing we're going to do with the chiefs. I'll go through it again with them, with the chiefs, with our chiefs on the line, so that we can all have a discussion of what that means for you as a service. And then the next time around, we, when I come back, start talking with my team, with you guys, uh with the council and mayor and chiefs, will be about system design. So what do you want to do with this information? Now, now you know, now we can't say we don't know, we do know. So what do we do with what we know? How far do we want to take it? How much design do we want? And and as you can see, the sky's the limit, because you are in a privileged position. Um because you did take this to a, almost a traditional model, converting it to a fully traditional fire police model, totally on the table. Uh I would suggest you, you know, you wouldn't send police doing fire calls or EMS calls, but you're you're pretty close to that. You you demonstrate you have the capacity to handle that. All the way to you have a full uh public safety model, that's still completely on the table, if you wanted to go all the way back down and start again, trying to get to the public safety model. You could see that the call activity in both fire and EMS is is not high enough that you couldn't handle it within a public safety model. Um you saw that the call activity itself is pretty low, so that's still on the table. And then blended systems, real blended public safety systems are still out there. I'll give you an example. We are doing right now, Green Bay, Ashravanna, home of the Green Bay Packers. And they do a fully integrated public safety model. So at night, the police officers take over the fire calls. So there's a, there's a million different varieties of these things, but at first, what I needed to get to everybody was a common understanding of call activity. So you need to get to a place where everybody says, okay, I know what the calls are, I know how we perform, I know what I want to maintain, and I know what I'm willing to change or sacrifice, because then it becomes policy positions. No, you don't, there's no need to answer now. We'll, we'll go through it one more time. This takes usually two or three iterations of data, because there's a lot of data to absorb. And right now, you're just receiving it for the first time. The next question is usually come, well, what's the impact of that? So what does that mean? If I decide to do something like that, what does it mean to me? And so we have to go through that iteration.
Can you go back to the previous slide?
Sure.
The question I have is uh, based on your your expertise or your knowledge of the, of of this field, the number of calls responded by police, fire, and EMS is how does that stack up nationally in terms of
So
how do we benchmark ourselves?
Very well, actually. That's why I'm saying you have so many options. It's not unusual. Fire engines normally, an engine and fire response lives between point five U H U and one point one U H U, which is really a um ten percent, less than ten percent activity on fire. That's, they respond, about one percent of all your calls in any community in the United States is actually an active fire. That's just the statistics. Um and they, and their activity is covered in about five to ten percent workload. The hi- largest, fastest growing workload in any activity is the medical workload, but it's all low acuity workload, which in your case was about right. Your fire department's about nineteen percent of its workload is in medical. The question, whether or not you want it to be there, that's a different question, but that's where it is, and it's going to continue to grow. I can tell you that, because it's going to grow in low acuity. That's the, the low acuity call, um, there's actually a couple of people that are around the circuit speaking about, they call it the silver tsunami. The issue is that we're outlasting our capacity for healthcare, so we live longer. Somebody's got to service that, and there is no healthcare institution to pick up that slack, so EMS is picking up the entirety of that responsibility. Low acuity calls are going to double, they say, within the next five years. So take whatever your low acuity call is and then double it. So you're benchmarking very well. Your police department's right where they're supposed to be.
Okay.
Um I would like to see their their self initiated a little lower than thirty percent. I'd like more than twenty five, but it's nothing that's dramatic. I didn't see anything there that's good, I don't know.
I I guess the question I was going for or asking was, it seems like, based on that one chart where you compared all, all three of the services, seems like there's a lot of overlap.
There is.
And now nationally, are people starting to pull that overlap apart?
Yes.
Okay.
Generally, um, so we just finished one um that we redesigned, and only about, like I said, fifteen to seventeen percent of calls had any dual assignment in the medical field. It's just, it's, it, you're way, way, way over resourced on medical. And that's partly because you created, again, the public safety M F R model, so they were medical first response. So it's logical that they're going. You have ALS fire response with capacity to go, so they're going. And you got a private EMS company that wants, that gets paid to transport, so they're going. So the nature of your design is, we're all going. It is just the nature of our design. The question is, how do you want to redesign it? Those are discussions that are going to be very interesting. What do you want to do with that? Who do you want? Do you want just the fire department to go? Just the police department to go? Keep the the BLS on the uh police side, keep the ALS on the fire? There's a, there's no right answer to it. It's just what you want to do with your design.
Okay.
Little bit about a survey. So this is where I was most proud of your personnel. Um we went out, surveyed your personnel. None of this is, all of it is is anomalous, so it's just groupings of themes that we looked at. We asked specific questions. We wanted to understand how the the responders feel about the service they provide in their core competency, and then the crossover service they provide with their uh PSO program. And so we sent out, we had a very high completion ratio, actually, about seventy four percent, fourteen out of nineteen in the fireside, and uh thirty nine out of forty eight in the police side, uh which traditionally we don't see very, that that kind of high number. So I congratulate the chief and his team for having such a high completion ratios. That's, that's very good. On the fire side, if you, the first question is, I believe Monroe Fire Department finds good level of service to our community. Um you almost universally had a yes, so thirteen out of fourteen strongly agreed, only one disagreed with that statement. When I began my current job, the initial training I received regarding fire and medical response permeate adequately, that was a hundred percent. Uh yes, and the ongoing fire medical response training I received continues to enhance my skills. Only one disagreement, thirteen out of fourteen agreed. Uh the public safety officer program provides effective, efficient fire and medical related safety to the residents of Monroe. Total disagreement, fourteen of them disagreed, so you didn't have one on the fireside that agreed. The public safety officer program should be continued. You had fourteen that disagreed. I believe the morale morale within the fire department is good. You had uh thirteen out of fourteen that agreed. I believe the overall working relationship with different personnel and police personnel are good. You had twelve out of fourteen that disagreed. So we are by design creating conflict in our system, and I'll come back to that in a second. The police, fire and police worked adequately together or in order to get in calls, fourteen disagreed. Responders, fire and police personnel have a clear understanding, common structures when responding to fire and medical related calls. You had a large disagreement there, ten and twelve of fourteen, only two agreed. Two didn't think it was applicable, and I guess ten uh disagreed. There was clear lines of command on on fire scenes. Responders, fire and police personnel have a clear understanding of the command structure responding to law enforcement. The fire department said nine out of them agreed, four of them said it wasn't applicable, one strongly disagrees. Um again, I think that's normal when you look at it through a statistical lens. They had a very low interaction on on fire, on fire, on police related calls, so it's not surprising that seems to have a pretty clear chain of command. I believe in there many ways, fire departments' operations can be more efficient, service staff are improved. You had um a strong agreement to that. You had a strong agreement to equipment we use for fire and medical responses is reliable and appropriate to the job. You had fourteen that agreed on on that. A problem with fire service equipment are handled appropriately, and they get feedback with problems, fourteen out of fourteen agreed, strongly agreed. I have all the required equipment that I need to do my job effectively, fourteen, thirteen out of fourteen agreed on that one. And the fire department management commands to understand my daily problems when we face them, job fourteen out of that one. The fire department management deals effectively and to value with issues of misconduct and satisfactory performance that may occur. You had thirteen that agreed on that one, thirteen out of fourteen. Uh police and fire department management together deal effectively, transparently with issues of misconduct or unsatisfactory Uh, police and fire department management together deal effectively, transparently with issues of misconduct or unsatisfactory performance that may occur between the two departments. You had a strong disagreement on that one. Thirteen out of fourteen. Overall, I am satisfied with my job being done by my immediate supervisor. You had thirteen out of fourteen on that one. And here's just kind of a summary of what the commentary was for current themes for fire employees as follows. Lack of accountability for corrective actions needed regarding P S O performance. No mandatory training for P S Os. P S Os have a minimal amount of training. Many P S Os say, say they became P S Os only for the extra money. P S Os are accountable for to the police department even if on a fire medical call. There's a double standard between fire and police regarding performance. P S Os do not carry out fire ground duties and there's no repercussion. Fire and police personnel do not work well together on fire scenes. So that's the fires perspective of the program. Now, before I jump into the police department, because you're gonna see that the police department is trending about the same, a little bit more balanced for, potentially. But it really has to do with the statistics. Why I put these after I put the statistics up is that you see whenever you send over a sign on calls that don't require that level of personnel, you will always have conflict. You have to have a reason to be there. We're, we're emergency services personnel. We show up to do something. The showing up to do nothing is not a good position to put these, this personnel in. So part of the redesign, part of the thought process has to be how to clean that up. Because we, by purposely designing systems that over assign, purposely put people in conflict with each other. Right? If there's only one patient and six of us want to touch that patient, it's never going to be a smooth transition to that patient. We have to design a system that helps people do the job that they're supposed to do when they get there. The police department, I believe, oops, sorry. I believe the Monroe Police Department provides a good level of service to our community. You had a very strong agreement, thirty-nine out of thirty-nine on that one. I, when I began my current job, the initial training I received in conjunction with my P S O duties prepared me adequately to, for work. On this one, you had nineteen that agreed and you had fifteen that disagreed and five that wasn't applicable. So you had a pretty balanced, I'm not sure that even getting out of the gate, they felt the P S O program was supportive in a way that they needed to be supported to get, to do a, a good job with it. The ongoing training I receive in conjunction with my P S O duties continues to enhance my skill. You have very strong disagreement on that. Twenty-four out of a possible, uh, thirty-nine that disagree that they have enough, uh, they received enough training to continue to do the job properly. So the perception from the fire department and the feeling of the P S Os is not that far apart, at least in the large majority of them. The public safety officer program provides effective and efficient fire and medical related safety to the residents of Monroe. You had a good agreement, the twenty-seven agreed, but you did still have ten that said, no, we don't think so. The public safety officer program should be continued. You had twenty that said yes. You had fourteen that said no. I believe the morale within the police department is good. You had a very strong yes. I, a little by a lot. I believe the overall working relationship with the fire and police personnel is are good. You had a thirty-nine out of thirty-nine that disagreed on that. Fire and police personnel work adequately together and are integrated on calls. Very strong disagreement. Thirty-four out of thirty-nine disagree on that. Responders, police and fire personnel have a clear understanding of the command structure when responding to fire medical calls. It's actually pretty split. Seventeen agreed that said, yeah, that's pretty good. And, and twenty-one said, no, it's, it's actually not very good. Responders, police and fire personnel have a clear understanding of the command structure when responding to law enforcement. This was kind of inverted. They had seventeen agreed, but you had twenty that disagreed. They even thought on, on police calls, there's a challenge. Now here's what I'm thinking on that and I'm gonna guess. So this is again a gerrmism. It's got no value other than my speculative guess. But I think in many cases they show up and the role, the, the problem with public safety, if it's not very clearly defined roles, that's where they start to cross over. Public safety officers are police officers that also do some medicine, that also do some fire. And anybody who's been in the field knows that very few calls are that clean that are just medical calls. You show up to a medical call and there's drugs on the table. Now I'm a medical respondent as a police officer. Right? So there's a lot of confusion within role definition. So some of this is about how we define those roles. So it's not surprising to see some of these numbers. I believe there's many ways police department's operation can be more efficient and service thereby improved. You actually didn't have a high agreement to that. About twenty-seven percent think that they are, that the way they do their job is a pretty good way of doing the job. The equipment we use for the purpose of P A program, P S O program is reliable and appropriate to do our jobs. I actually expected a much larger disagreement with all the, you know, complaints and the reviews that we did. Uh, twenty-two disagreed, uh, but fourteen, uh, thought they, they had good equipment. Uh, twelve had a good equipment, five not applicable. Problem with law enforcement and P S O program equipment are handled appropriately and I get back, I get feedback on problems. That one had a very strong disagreement. I have all the required equipment that I need to do my job effectively. Uh, you had a pretty split group there. Seventeen that agreed and eighteen disagreed. The police department management command understands daily problems that we face with our jobs. Very strong agreement on that. Police department management deals effectively and transparently with issues of misconduct or unsatisfactory performance that may occur within the police department. Very strong agreement on that. Police and fire department management together deal effectively and transparently with issues of misconduct or unsatisfactory performance that may occur between the two departments. Very strong disagreement. So they resemble themselves very close between them and the police and the fire department. Overall, I'm satisfied with the job being done by my immediate supervisor. Very strong agreement on that. And here are your themes, recurring themes. The P S O program needs one supervisor for the entire entity. The program cannot work as it's currently structured. There has been issues with the P S O being provided unsafe equipment. Fire department personnel are not held accountable. Fire training provided to the P S O is subpar in design for P S O to fail. Fire personnel are allowed to recovery time after an incident while P S O must return to work. The two cultures clash. There will never be cohesive bond between the fire department and police department. And there are three options. Separate the fire department and police function completely. Fully integrate the fire function into police, essentially eliminate the fire department. And three, divide the city in half. Contact, contract Monroe Township and French Township for fire service and essentially eliminate Monroe Fire Department. Those were the recurring themes in that. So an interesting, interesting, interesting study. I have actually say of all the things, some of it is very clearly a design issue. Some of it we can deal with at our level, at your level, at a policy level by designing a system that one way or the other answers the question of P S O in, P S O out. And if it's in, what, what does it need to do? That's the question that now has to get answered. So that's really the end of my presentation. So I've chattered for like, I don't know, two hours. I'm almost out of breath. Um, so from there, really it's our next steps. The next steps, the way I see usually these programs go, now that you know what the personnel is telling you, you know that there's some legitimacy because we have so much overlap that we're creating conflict where it doesn't need to be. How do we want to redesign a system that's effective, that's efficient, that serves your population well, and it moves you forward sustainably? And in my opinion, all options are still completely on the table. Part of this, I still want the chiefs to weigh in with me and, or my team on where do they think it needs to go? What do we need to do with it? Now that they have the numbers, statistics, but I can tell you, um, it's probably the first time they've seen their system to analyze this way in so many different ways. We've, we've cut and diced it in all kinds of programmatic areas. They've probably not looked at it like that. So they need time to digest this information. Um, but our next, so this, this usually closes my phase one where you get all the statistical and all that great knowledge. Phase two is let's start working through what, what does mean for you to have a, a public safety system.
Questions from council for, at this point at the close. Councilman Jermaine?
Will we receive a hard copy or an email copy of this?
Yes.
Thank you.
Absolutely. That's exactly my.
Yeah, it's a lot of data. Uh, councilman Mark?
Yes. Uh, once we filter through all of this, once you filter through all the information with the two chiefs, are you gonna come back to us with your professional recommendation?
Uh, I can give you my professional recommendation right now if you'd like. All systems are unique and are designed for each community independently. I will guide you through what works, what doesn't work. My chiefs, the other two chiefs that I work with will help you understand if you take this impact, this is what it means. But at the end of the day, this is your community. This is your policy decision. This is what's gonna drive your city forward, um, in the cost effectiveness model that you need, whatever it is to be sustainable for you. And then what level of risk and reliability you want to give to your community. It, it really does belong to you. That's why we work so hard at data. What we're trying to give you is as much knowledge as possible to make informed decisions on policy moving forward. Cause this is first policy. Here's a simple one. I want to have two departments. That's a policy decision. It doesn't belong to anybody but you. And I can justify wanting it or I can justify not wanting it. It doesn't really matter as much as you may believe it does. Call assignment matters a lot, but there's a lot of things that, that need to happen, that you need to think through. You saw the statistics. The workload, I can make an elegant argument today that there is not enough workload to justify a full fire department, less than a great public safety. Cause I'm sure ten years ago, when only Mr. Mayor could answer that question, that was probably the debate at the time. Well, does the workload for a community our size justify an independent fire department? You could answer that question one way or the other. But I can tell you nationally, that's about the right number. They're not underworked. If, if you're looking at it from a fire perspective alone, that's the fire departments across the United States. That isn't like Monroe is unique and it's, it's way down here. It's not. The police department is the police department. There's lots of things that they could do if they weren't having some version of a readiness model to try to respond to fire and medical calls. There's a lot of things communities do with police departments that are much more proactive and a lot less reactive. But the reason you're so reactive is because you doubled up on all medical calls, doubled up on firing calls. So they do a lot of other activity that, and when we showed you the statistics of busyness, they're sixty percent, seventy percent. So in every eight to ten hours shift, they're working six, eight hours on calls. And that's for police. That's very high because they gotta do reports. They gotta do a bunch of other things. Sorry.
No, that's quite all right. I guess what I'm seeing from the data, okay, and I try to break this down as simple as, so I can understand it, is that from your discussion, the fire department is a readiness function, whereas the police department is a response function.
Right.
Okay.
Exactly right.
All right. Now out of the three groups, we have police, fire and EMS. One of the options, and you went through, said the question for council should be to start thinking P S O or no P S O. One of the options wasn't discussed because out of the three groups, one of the options wasn't discussed. Can we remove EMS and have the fire department transport, which we used to do, is another option? Which would take a third player out of that system and out of that service.
We can look at it for you, but I can tell you upfront, transport in, in the United States done by pub- public entities, none. Literally none cover their costs. There isn't one in the country. So you wouldn't be an exception. Eventually it would cost you more than, than the service to transport. The transport's not a real, this is not a moneymaker anymore. See, transport, when it made money, and I can, cause I'm old enough to speak about those things. Thirty years ago, we made a ton of money in, in transports. That's when the heyday of transport was around. Everybody was transporting. And everybody wanted to be in transport was because we could build a lot of private payment models. Today, everybody lives off Medicare and Medicaid. So since they live off of Medicare and Medicaid, your percentage of earning on per transport trips is, is very low. On average, Medicaid is about a hundred and thirteen dollars, two hundred and fifty-six dollars to transport a Medicare and they represent the vast majority of your contact.
Well, let me ask you this follow-up question. If that's the case, where people are not making money and it's not as profitable as it used to be, in the future, our community is going to be faced with ha- not having a third party transport carrier?
That's a realistic possibility. We're seeing, that's where, that's why we're seeing, we're, we're, we've moved quite, not quite a few, but a few fire departments into the transport. But it was eyes wide open for the community. It was the fact that you're at risk. Right now, because it, the reason you can, you have privates in your community is because they're, they have the whole county. They have enough critical mass to, to go out and, and, and get a private provider to live off a two, four, five percent profitability. That's what they're living on. Two to four, six percent, you're a really good private. That's what your profit margins are on these things. You have to have a critical mass so that you can say, it's worth it for me because I'm making my bottom line numbers is large enough for the risk that I'm taking. But if you carved off, let's say you decided for whatever reason, Monroe decides to take their own transports out. Says from a future safety for my community, I'm not willing to take the risk. I understand that I'm probably not gonna make any money. It might be marginal loss or, or break even. It won't be one way or the other. It'll be okay. But I, I'm willing to absorb that risk for my community. That alone may cause the ripple effect that you, you may triple the private enterprise and now everybody's struggling to get their own transports.
Okay. Let me just keep following up on this because I, I think it's an interesting, uh, conversation. If, if, if every community in the state of Michigan, and the state of Michigan is basically aging in place, okay? Some communities have five deaths for every birth. And you talked about the silver, the silver tsunami. Is it gonna get to a point where, and I'm just exploring this, is it gonna get to a point where public transport becomes a, a service just like we have fire and police? Police does not make money and fire doesn't make money, but they, they're public services. Is it gonna get to a point where transport becomes a public service? Because no one's making any money yet.
I, my answer to you is, if I had that kind of clarity, I'd like to, I, I'd gamble more on it. I do think in places it's going to happen.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know that it's gonna happen everywhere. There are still some very large pockets of communities where the privates can make some real money on it. But are you in an at-risk community? Probably. Is it a short-term at-risk? Probably not. As long as nobody moves in the county, I think you're okay. Uh, but if, if you see your neighbors or somebody start moving in a direction where they want to take over their own transport, then, then we probably need to revisit that question because if, the, the only differentiating factor is critical mass for privates. Just think of it that way. They need a certain number. It's, it's, and depending on the company, forty, fifty, sixty thousand transports, that's when you start to make money. You love the hundred and change transports, but there's only twelve or fifteen of those in the country. And there's like four private enterprises, enterprises that are doing more than two hundred thousand transports. And that's where they make big bulk dollars. Um, but in small communities like yours, I always think you have a level of risk. And we've moved, so like I said, some fire departments, we moved in there because that was the better safety model for them. But it's an interesting question. I, the answer today is I would probably not take that risk. But I wouldn't be surprised if in five years I was having the same discussion with you and you said, well, two of our neighbors decided to transport, so we gotta get in the game.
Okay. I, I just wanted to talk about that since that's one of the three that is, that appears on all the statistics.
Well, I guess I gotta follow up to that is, cause I think back when we started with, uh, uh, M C A, of course, we, others were involved with M C A in the county. We're the one that was not. And of course, the central location of the county, but also the hospital. It actually made, uh, delivery service a whole different model, which probably made it more reasonable along the lines you're saying. But it's broader than just Monroe County as we look at this because their parent company, you know, if I'm not mistaken, is there a hundred and fifty-three different locations that they transport for? So there, it's a, it's a bigger model that's all of southeast Michigan, not just Monroe County. And I think if, and, and councilman's, uh, point is, if, you know, you can see where the transitions could, could occur, but I think we have taken perspective of all the, um, what is all the numbers that are being delivered by the service of transport currently and why that model may be differently than just if it was Monroe only. Because like the parent company is in their dispatch. We didn't get into that and I just, uh, I'll probably say that for later, but how the dispatch gets from our local dispatch to the, uh, uh, EMS response dispatch and is that a, is that a contributing factor? I'm sure we'll, we'll have that because they dispatch as well. How does those, the timeliness of that as well, the, the statistics, but having a broader base of, of a, of a, a private company, I think is gonna make it less likely for that. But I understand the point made and the, the potential in the future.
It is actually, um, it's interesting. Uh, and I, I get not for, I don't know that at this point in time is where you would, you would jump off. You have a, a lot of other things to tackle in your system designed and, and the transport side that right now is at least free and sustainable. But when you have a chance, speak to your hospital directorships. They're the ones that will give you the best idea of what you're, how they're feeling about the medical sustainability of their communities. They're really the ones that know. So we always survey hospitals. They'll tell you, because hospitals also, for a long time, were in huge profitability margins. And now their profitability is way down, four percent for a hospital. And they're buying ambulance programs, interestingly enough.
Right.
To try to capture their own patients because they're, 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 have that fear that they may lose the transport coming into their hospitals. So, so it's a, it's an interesting market, uh, question to ask. But right now you are in a safe zone where it's free. Uh, and I think you have a lot of other things to tackle, whether or not to get into the transport as well. Um, is a, is a different discussion, a different, a different moment in your, uh, system design of public safety.
Councilman?
With the aging population going forward in the future, you said it was gonna increase five percent, correct?
No, it's gonna double, double.
Going to double. So with the ambulance systems, was that gonna impact? It's, I mean, productivity because of the growing population? You don't have enough productivity?
There's the other interesting question. There's the other interesting question. So when we talked about response times, right now, that will, those are all your balancing acts with private enterprise. So performance costs money, right? So the more I have readiness model, the more I have to pay for that. I've got ambulances that are not transporting. Transport companies make money on transport. So what they're going to, the first thing you're going to notice is deterioration of response time. If their money's not coming in, if they're not making as much money, they start reducing the amount of resources to match their supply and demand, to try to increase workload to get more revenue out of them. So it's a balancing act. You will know, if you're tracking it well, and have good tracking indicators in your dispatch center, and it shows what their response times are after getting longer, if you anecdotally are hearing, hey, my guys are waiting longer for the ambulance, those are signals that your market's starting to change. Because again, there's two different things. It's productivity, so how much do they transport, and payer mix. The more I lose private pay, and the more I have to go to live off of Medicare and Medicaid, the harder it is for ambulance companies to survive.
Is that something we should be looking at long-term, so that we can make the right choices right now?
I don't know that you can, see, if you made it now, you're probably premature. We don't know how the market's going to change, because we had a hard left after Obamacare, and what was kind of left in limbo. So I don't know. My answer is, if I knew that, I'd probably be doing something else, because that's really the, everybody asking the same question. What's going to happen? Are we going to go back to a much more private pay model? So if we went right back and, you know, had a lot more insurance, private insurance companies back in the game, paying full freight for ambulance, you'll see a lot of more ambulance companies coming back in the market. In our heyday, we were charging without any problem, $1,200, $1,400 in ALS transport. There's a lot of difference between $1,200 to $1,400 ALS transport, or $256 or $113. That's a huge margin of loss. So the payer mix, and who and what pays, that's really still so in limbo, that I'd give you bad advice by telling you, look at it now. It may, if it gets, if President Trump gets re-elected, you may see, then you may see that change completely, that whole model change, so who knows? I couldn't answer that for you, and it would be totally speculative on my part. Yes, sir.
One further question, though. This gets at forecasting, because just exactly what you were saying, is that if our task as a council is to discuss service, and to discuss the basic fundamental question, PSO, no PSO, or some type of mix, and let's just theoretically say, we decide to go PSO, based on, you know, some of the data. And then five years from now, we are, our community is facing an issue where we can't get transport, because it's no longer profitable, even for a nonprofit. Then we're stuck.
There's so many options for you.
Okay, but I'm just, you know, because the policy that we're, what I'm getting at, the policy that we're going to make, the decisions we're going to make in the next two or three months, are going to be impactful enough, where they're going to last this community for the next five or 10 years.
Easy, yeah.
Okay? And if we can't forecast what's going to happen in the next five or 10 years, we could be placing the community at risk, depending on not knowing how the next election's going to come out, not knowing if there's going to be a change in healthcare nationally, we could be actually creating a, an environment of greater risk. That's my concern.
Yes, we will have, that's good, because that means we'll have a lot of meaningful discussion.
Oh, we will.
Because, here's the thing. The reason most political entities tend to not want to tackle public safety, is because everything you do in public safety is a balancing act of risk. There is no, I'd love to tell you, I could tell you something, a zero-risk proposition, there is no zero-risk proposition. It's always an offset of risk and dollars. If you say, well, you know what, I'm going to prepare myself for the next five years, and I'm going to take that task on, because that's what I want to do, that has a dollar sign assigned to it.
Right.
Can you afford that now, and do you need to do it now? My answer probably is no, but that doesn't mean you would be wrong to say, I'm preparing. So I want to have that capacity in my system. But that preparation, again, that readiness model, to get ready to do that, you're spending dollars to do that. So it's always a risk reward. None of this that I'm telling you here is, the statistics are just to help inform you of where you have capacity in your system. Then what you choose to do with that capacity in your system, how you choose to design it, short-term, long-term, that's totally yours. That's really what belongs to you. This is where we have meaningful discussion. I bring my other chiefs in, we have lots of phone calls, and talk through, what does it mean to you? What if we did this? What if? Talk with the chiefs, what do you think, what appropriate for your community? And then you come out with a consensus of how you want to handle the risk base of your community. And every answer is correct, by the way. There is no wrong answer. I've not, if all you could ever afford was one fire truck, and that's what you could afford, then that's what you can afford. At least you did what you could afford to try to mitigate your risk. If you could do more, and you can afford to do more, and you're willing to do more, then you do more. In Orlando, we suggested, so just to answer your question, the fire department took over all of transport, but they had a civilian branch to it. So they have civilian that work for them, that do fire transport. So they're single, what they call single patched, they're patched only to be EMS, not under the fire department. So there's so many options in the EMS design. There's no limitation to what you can do with any of the public safety models.
I guess, as I was thinking, as you asked, John, was, you know, thinking outside the current structure and personnel classifications, and no matter where we go, and there's always that potential of something changing, which changes the model that you have, but how you go back to respond to that, I'll say, critical change, has to be open in looking at all options. And, you know, just as you said, there was a different option that was probably done than what it was in the past. You know, whether it be about personnel, equipment, the type of equipment, and the chart showed the differences in hours and things like that, is really that complicated equation. So I understand the point of the councilman, I understand that there's, you just said options too. We have to think about this in a realm not how we currently are, but what it could be and how it could be.
Right. That's what, this first session is really to give you your state of how you are, how you perform, where you're spending your money. The next phase is really think outside the box, let's challenge each other on where we could take this. How do you want to design it? We'll model it, give you an idea, and say, this works, no, it wouldn't work. And this is really where the chiefs have to jump right back in. I think it's really important that your chiefs have a say in how they design public safety models as well, because they're going to have to live with it and manage it.
The questions from the council? I know we're getting to the...
Very nice presentation, by the way. Very nice.
It's very informative. Councilman, go ahead.
Well, at least the benefit I see between the data and the surveys, is that there's certainly a consensus between them. There seems to be a large amount of discontent with the current way that the PSO system is structured, and that's good, because we can't afford it anyway.
Can't afford what?
The PSO system as it is. Apparently, we're overreacting, it's an ineffective and inefficient way of operating, our current method of operation, we, there is a necessity to change one way or another. That seems to be clear both in the surveys, by both departments, and it seems to be clear with the data presented in terms of our response, and in terms of what it's costing us.
Yeah, I would just be cautious. You are a modified PSO. Like I said, you are as close to a...
Yes, and of course, one of those options would be to go to a full system.
Then you are as you are to a PSO. PSO in, if you ever want to see really integrated PSOs, I can give you some names of really integrated PSOs, you are more of a two-separate service.
Just half and half thing, absolutely.
That's what's really costing you a lot of money.
Yeah, and let me just clarify what you said, councilman. I don't think it's, it's not an issue relative to PSO. I think what the results of the presentation are, is that we've got significant overlap, and we have more capacity in the public safety model that we're currently using. It's not PSO-related or fire, but it's the public safety model, because we also have to include EMS, which is done by a private party.
Yeah, that's, yes. It's very much, yeah.
You have huge capacity in your system, your performance is excellent at six minutes, it's one of the better ones in the nation, so you really don't, you have room to move in many different directions. The question is, where do you want to move? And that's really not a consultant's role, that's really...
That's policy role.
Policy role, so.
So I guess I just wanted to apologize to both departments. It's like, you guys are doing great work. The response times are really good, there's a lot, there's a huge call volume, they're staying busy, and I think the failure really is the system that we have thrust upon them, that they seem to really not like. So I'm sorry, guys. You obviously seem to have a vested interest in the changes that are coming, and that, I mean, seeing the attendance that's here tonight, I'm just really sorry that this is the system that you've been presented with in the past. I certainly hope that we can do something about it in the future.
Well, I guess I'll respond. Because I also think it's the implementation. And clearly, by the surveys, there's an issue. Let's just put it out there. The issue may not be the model as much as the implementation. It may be a matter of recognizing and embracing what's long been started years ago, and I think that's just something we have to have the harsh conversation about as a council, and how do we, if, whatever model comes out in the C N, but it's still the implementation. We can't serve the community as two, that's, how to say, as separate thoughts about the service and who does what. Because it's all about the community, and how we provide the service in the most effective and efficient manner. And that's what I'm going to look for, as we discuss the data and options as we move forward. If we're not implementing what's been set forward, then we have to look internally at why that is. I think that's a consideration, that's just my view.
Mr. Mayor, you are correct. And I think councilmember was using model as interchangeable verbiage. The reality is, you don't have any one model. Your reality is, you have a PSO kind of model, you have a kind of police model, and a kind of fire model. I think that's where you, I agree with you, councilmember and Mr. Mayor, I think, no matter what you do, irrespective, pick a path, and just follow that path right to completion.
Yep.
That will make it a better system, no matter what. The incompletion of a pathway is what, why you see all those anomalies in the numbers that you have.
Very good.
Yeah, I don't know that I disagree with any of that.
Well, I don't necessarily know if I disagree, but implementation is part of it, but the design is a big part of it. Because if you're implementing something that wasn't designed appropriately, you're going to have operational issues. So that's a concern I have, is was it designed properly to have effective implementation?
I wouldn't be able to answer that, that was nine years ago, and I didn't do the study. So, but the reality is, you're right. One of the reasons we, you hired us, was to give you this data, so you had a foundation of facts to have discussions. The problem with public safety, and this is, again, I don't want to sound like I'm coming off the pulpit, but the problem with public safety is, it's very emotional, because you do touch people's lives. And nobody wants to be responsible for the, I didn't go to the call, or I didn't make the right decision. So the only way to shield yourself is to be as informed as possible. You're as informed as possible, knowing that no matter what you do, you're going to have a level of risk, because that's public safety, but a well-informed decision, and then a full implementation. Let's, as a group, decide, this is what we want to do, whichever pathway, doesn't really matter, and then let's do it. Give ourselves a one month, one year, whatever timeframe you give yourself, but at the end of that, you come back, you reevaluate, is it what we wanted it to be? And if it's not, it's time to retool it. But it's not, this kind of evolved very slowly and painfully, and I think a reflection of what we, when we interviewed everybody, all of, everybody in the fire department, and I think almost everybody in the police department, we interviewed. And that was really the overwhelming sentiment, was this cut by a thousand knives, right? It was just, I was bleeding to death, and I didn't know why. So at least having an implementation pathway is important as well.
One last other thing that I want to talk to you about, that really doesn't have anything to do with police or fire, which is a concern to me based on your data, is that the central dispatch, how they, the time that a call comes in to the time that the unit is picked to respond, and then also the idea that they're not going through the graduated system, the granularity of determining if it's an A, B, C, or D, is also having an impact on our serviceability. But that's something out of our control, that I think we need to, we need to have a discussion with the county on.
Yeah, I'm not sure it's out of your control. Deployment is totally your discretion. I don't know that you've gotten into it deep enough, or it's just starting, or how, or why. That would be something the chiefs would have to answer for you, but I think, overall, I would definitely think you can give yourself some authority on it. All over Florida, there's central dispatch, that's not unusual. Central dispatch is becoming more and more the norm, so I wouldn't worry so much about that. But most communities, most cities that participate in a central dispatch system, have a charter with performance expectations on the central dispatch, for the contribution they make to it. That's usually how it goes. So I expect this, 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 and this. My medical director does, has a role on these cards. My deployment model is this, and they service you. It's just like buying service from somebody else. Right now, the problem was, I don't know that anybody really reviewed your dispatch data before, so you just didn't know. But now that you know, it's another thing that you need to fix.
Yeah, okay.
I think that, I just, I think that comment earlier, very early on, about, you know, what is the objective? Having that conversation, and this provides us maybe some foundation to have that, but also understand both sides as well.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So that's, as was presented, was kind of, appreciate the time and effort and the information. Next comes this Phase Two, as you spoke to regarding the next steps with the chiefs, as well as some individual councilmembers as well, to speak to all them and start that process. I know your contact with the city manager, Mr. Pastu, will keep us on track to make sure that we can even follow through with this, because I think it's very, very important for many reasons, and, you know, for our community. So thank you. There's no other questions from council?
Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you, again.
See you again soon. Mr. Pastu, any final comments or reviews?
No, other than, I think Mr. Fuentes is going to leave a flash drive that, with his presentation, that we'll probably post on the website, and make available certainly for the city council, was, we'll give you some directions if we put it into Google Drive or whatever that we have with that, so. You know, at the end, I just, the only thing I had, I had to read when I did my little introductory, is the last step in the process is a complete report, publicly presented, outlining and recommending short and long-term, along with implementation strategies. I think that kind of gets it, what Mr. Fuentes was, we have to have the implementation strategies to make sure it's a success, and certainly, as he said, the monitoring of that on an ongoing basis, you know, annually, or even more periodically if need be, so. Other than that, I don't have anything else to add, but appreciate the presentation.
Okay, before we move on to the next item, of course, we've amended, added to the agenda. Now, there's a lot of data here, and I know there's a lot of people here, there's many people that said they thought they'd be coming, if not, we're watching, and there's opportunities to review that through impact, and to really look at some of the data closer.